It looks like we're all here.
I think so.
Okay, so let's reconvene into the public session. Are we ready to go on the YouTube?
Not yet, not yet.
We're up, it's up.
I didn't get any, I didn't get a message. That it's up.
It should be coming, it is live though.
Connie, shall we wait for you to give us the sign?
I guess we can go ahead, I'm more interested in the chatting feature, but okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, great, let's reconvene the public session. Hope you guys, everybody has had a great summer. We are just a few weeks away from the fall. This will be our last board meeting before the school year begins and it'll be a year that we all know will be filled with a lot of firsts. And it'll be very interesting for us as we move through this year. I saw a webcast recently that talked about when you're going through a lot of firsts, the most important thing is to be brave and show up. And when I think of what Roy and his team has done over the summer, they have been very brave and we very much appreciate what they have done. I also read a quote this morning that said, "The secret of managing change is to focus your energy not on fighting the old, but building the new." And when I think about the experiences our children are gonna have, or students are gonna have as they go to school in September, it will be a lot of new. And as Roy walks through his reopening plans for the fall, I think it is truly a demonstration of his desire to look at the new and to think out of the box, and for that I'm very, very grateful. But before he gives his report, we have a couple of administrative things that we need to take care of this afternoon or this evening. Starting with the annual approval of the Health and Safety Committee, and so Roy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, okay, thank you. So as you know, one of our requirements is to have a Health and Safety Committee in place. I believe attached is the listing of the committee members, who I assume will be continuing this year. On it, we have parents, administrators, nurses, school doctor, chief of police, board members, so there's pretty solid representation throughout, so we would ask the board to approve that, that committee.
Roy, one quick question, is there any different responsibility or expectations from this committee this year?
Well, I think with the whole pandemic going on and all the health considerations that we've had to plan for and put in place, it may take an added meaning, if you will, not that it wasn't meaningful before, but certainly the discussions around COVID, COVID testing, keeping schools open, how do you do all that stuff would be right for this group.
Any other discussion? If not, can we have a motion to approve the membership of the Health and Safety Committee? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Annual authorizations for the 2021 school year? Dan? Mr. Carlin?
You're on mute, Dan.
Dan, we're on the annual authorizations for the 2021 school year, is that you?
It is. Let's see. There's a new authorization that's, we're actually trying to clean up a lot of the stuff that gets to the board. There's some smaller contracts that, you know, discussing with Connie, we have the opportunity to keep those off the board agenda. Some special ed contracts, curriculum, some smaller facilities items. You can actually authorize me as the purchasing agent to sign those contracts so that they don't need to be on the board agenda and take up time every month. A lot of other districts, I think Connie has done a survey, have something like this. And so we're just looking to try this out for this year.
Just a note, that's when formal bidding procedures are not required by law.
Right. So it's a fairly narrow window of things, correct?
And fairly small.
Michael Finley, just as Chair of Finance Committee, any concerns?
No, I think that's fine, you're talking about Dan, get the authorization? Yeah.
And it's just for a year, correct, Dan?
Yeah, it would be an annual authorization, probably, Connie, would this be in the reorg meeting every year if we want to address it?
Yes, next year I'll have it on the reorg agenda.
What if any dollar limit is there?
There is a dollar limit, $25,000. Up to $25,000.
Okay, yeah, unless it's some emergency item, I don't see why we need to do this.
It's, it's, as I understand it, Tom, it is just-
I understand, Arlene, I don't think, I don't think we need to do it, therefore I don't think we should do it.
Okay, I, I have been involved with other boards that where the CEO has the ability to have a signing limit on contracts such as these that just keep the board meeting moving more fluid. So my experience has actually been very helpful to, for the efficient operation of the board.
And as a member of the Facilities Committee that has seen in the past some serious issues relating to the expenditure of money, I don't think this is something we should do.
Others?
I guess, I'm wondering how much underbrush you're actually getting rid of, because I don't feel like our board meetings are consumed by approving contracts below $25,000. So, you know, I get the, I get the risk reward, but I'm wondering, like, what's the, what's the issue of having, like, we don't spend that much time approving, you know, small contracts? Right?
Generally in the, the special needs area on, Rachel, in your work area, isn't that where generally it pops up?
The agency that we use for homebound tutoring that would fall under this. Last minute, we had to contract for some related services for just the summer, that would fall under $25,000.
I guess, I mean, we're probably already spending more time in this conversation than we do on small contracts, but is it an issue of you need to be able to sign things quickly and the board, like, it takes too long to get a board approval? Or is it just you're trying to, like, make it easier and, you know?
I would say a little bit of both, since we only have one board meeting a month, it's speed. There is a place where speed could be an issue. Has it been an issue? Has it been one specific instance where it's been an issue? And by the way, I have an overall objection to this being sprung on us at the general meeting. Okay?
Dan and Roy, what would you like to do at this point? We have not called a motion, so we can move on, or would you like to call a motion and see what happens?
No, why don't you table the, why don't you table the motion and, and we'll reevaluate that and come back to the board if necessary.
Okay. Great, moving on to the approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting that you had in your packet, any questions or comments?
No.
No.
Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain?
Can I interrupt? I think, Connie, can you resend the Zoom link to Tom Evans, he's, he's not, not getting it.
He just came on again, John.
He came on?
I just got a notice to admit him, so he's in, yep.
There is, okay.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Great. Okay, Roy, over to you for the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Hi, everybody, it's nice to see you all, somewhere, even virtual. Before I get into my report, I want to first introduce our new athletic director, Joe Haven. I don't think I've done that before, and I apologize, Joe, for last board meeting, I forgot to introduce you then. You know, I've been working with you now for a while, so I just assumed everybody else was too, but Joe Haven is our new athletic, athletic director, and I just want to welcome him to our board meeting and make sure the other board members who have not had the pleasure of meeting him know who he is. So I saw he just waved to everybody, so, Joe, welcome, there you are. There you go. I also want to again, said a special farewell to Karen Peterson, who's on the call tonight as well, because I think this is gonna be her last board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is that why she's smiling? I'm not sure, but Karen, we, as you know, we will miss you, but we know you're not gonna be far away from a phone call or a panic call or something like that, should we need it, so thank you again for everything you've done for us and for our district, and from the heart, we're gonna miss you terribly. Good luck.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, a few things I'd like to go over in my report, first, as you know, this week, or you may not know, but this week we welcomed back clerical staff and all the administrators back into the building. So it was nice seeing everybody, even behind the masks and the shields and everything else, just nice saying hello to them in person. We did start the week off in a, in a good way there. I'm gonna go over some of the reopening summaries for you of our, of our plan, just trying to figure out, I'm gonna save, share my screen for a moment. Hold on one second, folks. There we go. So, there we go. So, I'd like to just summarize now, most people have seen our reopening plans in all its glory, we've had meetings at the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school that were extremely well attended, well over 100 people at each of those meetings, in some case, I think 180, 170 people attending a meeting, which is terrific, a lot of great questions came in, a lot of thinking as part of that, so I just wanted to provide a very quick kind of summary about where we are currently, so, so everybody can see it once, one last time, so as, as you know, all our schools will have half days for the week of September 8th through 11th, and we'll start full days the following week.
Roy, will that be, everyone goes in the morning, or is that gonna be split morning and afternoon with the students?
Is that, you mean for the high school, Jen?
I guess in general. Yeah, I guess it would just be for the high school.
Really more the high school, I think, so, Anne, if you're on, you want to explain how it's gonna work, please, thanks.
Sure, in the high school, we are gonna have our morning and afternoon groups in every day. And I plan to send the schedule out later this week, just so people can generally see how it'll work for the high school, but every day, all the students will be in, it'll be for a shorter period of time.
So you'll split the half day effectively?
Yeah, exactly.
And it'll be in the morning, yes. We want to provide teachers with opportunities to be in their classrooms in the afternoon as we make this adjustment and transition back into in-person school. As we've mentioned before, students in the K-8 population will have in-person school full days. And in I-12, we're using a hybrid plan with half in the morning and half in the afternoon. Anne has sent out a, a schedule and we'll, we'll manage that, because it's two days in, two days off, and things like that, in the morning and the afternoon, so she has those details. We have continuously provided a remote option to any parent who's not comfortable having their child come to school. And to this point, based on the surveys and responses, we have about, a little under 10%, but right about 10% who have chosen, chosen that, that option. In the classrooms, desks will be placed six feet apart, we were able to do that in just about every single classroom. We are requiring everyone to wear masks, knowing that students will need, and staff will need mask breaks. That will kind of vary depending on the age of the children, but teachers are aware that they need to provide the mask breaks, and one of the reasons we have these desk shields on our desks is so a child can, you know, pull their mask down for a brief time behind the desk shield and not present any issues for anyone else. We've set up in the elementary school class pods, and the children will be staying with their class throughout the day. Again, we're just trying to limit the amount of contact that children have with other children as best we can. We are setting up areas for outdoor learning to use whenever possible, so the elementary school will be using the grassy area beyond the playground and part of the lawn and pond field for some outdoor classrooms. I know Trish has ordered some outdoor kind of seats that children will sit on that have a little area for their laptop to go up as well, so we're prepared to do that and prepared to have lunches out there whenever we can. Also, middle schools are also set up in classroom pods for their core academic classes, and so we're having the teachers move from class to class as, in the core academic areas, as opposed to the, the, the kids. When the kids do have to move, I know Tom is trying to work out if we can have one-way hallways and up stairways and downstairs, we should try to limit the traffic flow as best we can. Lunches, we've worked out with our, with Chartwells and Dave DiNuzzo, DiNuzzo, that to be a grab-and-go situation where students can preorder potentially at a few choices, and it'll be ready for them to pick up and go. We can util, we will be able to use our new cafeteria space, students will be sitting six feet apart, we'll put some outside tables up, and for the middle school, we'll be offering the Blue Gym to use as a second cafeteria space as well. Elementary school, in the, in the event of inclement weather, will be using their classrooms for lunch. And due to the high school schedule, no lunches are necessary at the high school. Their principals have worked out staggered start and dismissal times. They, they worked that jointly for that. We are using multiple entrances as well to try to, again, limit the amount of contact and the amount of density at, at the entrances. So for the elementary school, we're using the middle and ab under the canopy entrance, the playground doors and the kindergarten classroom doors. And at the middle school, we're using the two front pond field entrances and the auditorium entrance as well. And for the high school, we're using the auditorium entrance and the metal ab ramp. At each of those entrances, there'll be temperature kiosks there that a child will walk by. Their temperature will be taken, and any student who has a temperature above 100 will be asked to stand aside and wait for the nurse to come and confirm and follow up. Parents will be asked to do a health screening questionnaire each morning. I recognize that the first time we put out 6:00 AM was a bit early for some, so we were able to move that back to 7:30. And the kindergarten classrooms will have the handheld temperature scanners as opposed to the kiosks. In terms of ventilation, the areas that will be online from our new HVAC systems, we are getting the MERV 13 filters, and the areas where there are, we don't have the new AC, we're putting window units in, and we're also, we've also have on order the air purifiers with the HEPA filters. So we're, we're thinking that's the, we'll provide for fresh airflow that way. I will say that in, in making this plan, I'm very blessed to have a terrific administrative staff that work very hard on this every day, day in, day out, questions come up, and they're committed to providing the best possible conditions that we can for our children in our school and for our staff. And, you know, in thinking about this, we know that it's a, it's not an easy decision for parents to send their children to school or not. And we respect that and understand that. It's not easy for staff members to come back sometimes either. But, you know, this is really a shared responsibility between us and the parents in our community. We believe that we're setting up the best possible conditions that we can, the safest conditions, given the information that we have. We think we've done that, we're confident that our plan is, is a good one. But, like anything else, you know, whether your child is injured and wants to go back to play, and you take that risk of beginning to be hurt, there's always a risk of coming back in as well, but we think we've tried to mitigate as much risk as we possibly can, given our circumstances. So we do accept that as a shared responsibility and, and hope that parents will help us through this process, because that's the only way we're gonna get through this, is really working together to, to make the best of the, of the situation for all of us. But again, I thank our staff for really working hard and putting all this together, because it's been, it's been a challenge, I will say. And there'll be quite, during the public session, if anybody has questions about the plan, we can, we can go over it then. Next thing I want to do is really just take a moment to thank our Brunksville School Foundation for their support. We had a meeting that Brad and I attended last Monday night, I think it was, where we presented two grants to them. One was to purchase what we're calling supplies to make Zoom rooms. So when teachers are working in their classrooms, they can livestream to those who are learning at home. And so we've asked the foundation to support large screen TV, 65-inch screen TV, a laptop, camera, microphones, and a headset for the teachers. We tested it out, Brad tested it out with some of his tech people, and it seems to work quite well. We're also gonna put the TVs on arms that can swing in different directions, so children at home can either see the teacher or they can see the classroom, depending on the angle of the TV. We also know that we wanted to purchase equipment that can be used after the pandemic is over as well, so we were cognizant of that. And we're very happy that the foundation supported us in that grant, so we're able to purchase those resources for us. In addition, somewhat related to that, for in the event that teachers have to be, or we get shut down, if the, if there's a rising cases and we have to shut down, and we have to teach from home, we've asked the foundation to help us get supplies for our teachers to make it easier for their, for them to teach at home. So they did support us to be able to, to send each teacher with a home kit of a, a Wacom tablet, which is a digital tablet system that teachers can write on, and it'll appear on the screen like a whiteboard to do figures and things of that nature, a wireless mouse, a wireless keyboard, and then a headset, again, to make it easier for teachers to communicate from home. So, we, again, thank the foundation for their support and coming up very quickly together to, to organize that and to be able to prove that. The, the second grant that we presented to them was for the purchase of the Pure Zone antimicrobial film that we wanted to place on all our high-touch areas, which would include like doorknobs, pushplates, faucets, things like that, that we know are gonna be high-touch areas, and basically what it is, it's a very thin film that releases ions that actually interfere with the virus and, and kill the virus. It's very safe, it's used in hospitals and restaurants. We're not gonna put on student desks, but we're gonna put on the high-touch areas. So they were supportive of that as well, and we're gonna have that installed hopefully very soon as another layer of protection for our, our kids and our staff members, so a big shout out to the foundation for, for that, appreciate that. And the last thing I want to bring up as far as my report, and I'll turn it over to Mara, who's gonna do a report on data and assessment, but the governor announced that low and moderate-risk sports can begin playing and practicing for September 21st, and what's interesting is he included in that soccer, cross-country, field hockey, swimming, the high-risk sports, which would include football and volleyball, were approved to practice but not play, and any travel for competitions has to be, stay, stay within the region. Now, having said that, there's still a lot of question marks related to that, that was the, what the governor said in the press conference, but we have not received anything official from the State Department, and I know there are some meetings coming up with the State Visit Association, Athletic Association, and Section 1, because they're gonna have to do a lot of vetting on this and come up with a set of guidelines for us to see if this Section 1, for example, actually will be able to participate in play, so while the governor said it, we're still waiting for a lot of other things to come out to see if it's actually gonna come to pass or not. So while it might be good news, it, I don't want to temper that until we get better guidance from our State Department to help us out here. Okay, that's the end of that part of my report. I'm gonna turn it over to Mara in a second. Later on, when it's time to update the facilities, we can talk about that later on during, under the other part of the agenda. Okay? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, before you move on, there, there was some discussion about tents at one point, can you just tell us how you came on in there, what the process was?
Yeah, we looked into tents, we actually got as far as getting quotes and as far as getting approval from the Eastchester Fire Department. We decided to hold off on tents for a few reasons, one was a cost factor. It was roughly $100,000 to rent one tent for three months. Connected to that, we, we had to send things up to the State Department to vet for approval. We were told that was gonna take a few weeks at best to get their approval, and as we thought about it, we're still gonna be able to go outside on nice days. We don't need a tent to do that, but we can still set up our classrooms outside. And so the only time the tent really then becomes beneficial is in the rain, or if it's extremely hot, obviously, and sun beating down, those kind of conditions. But that combined, those factors combined with the potential risk of everybody, buddy being shut down if there's a second wave of the epidemic, and we're stuck with the bill on the tents, seemed to me to, to suggest that it may not be worth spending the $100,000 for at this point in time, given our other expenses and our other needs. Any other questions before I have Mara going, or Mike, you have something else? Okay, Mara, I'm gonna turn it over to you. And you're muted, so you have to unmute yourself. Can you share, Mara, are you not sure?
It's not allowing me.
Okay, all right, try, let's see, try now. Yep. There you go.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
And you can hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is the point of the year where I usually share some end-of-year assessment data. Clearly, this is going to look slightly different this year, based on the year's end and what assessments were actually given by the state, and which were not, but we do have some interesting information to share with you tonight. I just want to start by saying that I usually start this report with the 3 through 8 New York State ELA and math test scores, and of course, as we're all aware, those tests were not given by the state at the end, in the spring of last school year due to COVID. We were, however, able to have our students in kindergarten through 8th grade take a assessment that we use quite often called the STAR Renaissance Assessment, which tests students in ELA and math, and is able to actually pretty accurately predict how well they would have done on a state assessment. So Renaissance was wonderful in working with us to allow our students to access the system from home. Students in kindergarten through 5th grade took the exams in ELA and math independently. Students in 6th through 8th grade actually took their ELA and math tests through STAR Renaissance online in Zoom, so teachers monitored them as they were completing those assessments. So tonight, we're gonna look a little bit at where our students were predicted to be had they taken a New York State ELA or math test at the end of the year. Now, just for some reference, how accurate are these STAR assessments at predicting how students do on the New York State test? Well, this is information from 2019, and the dark blue bar represents the actual scores our grade four students received on the math test in 2019. We had 89% students proficient in grade four in 2019. And as you can see by the light blue bar, the STAR Renaissance exam predicted it very, with 100% accuracy. So it is a pretty good indicator of how students would do on these kinds of tests. Just quickly, another comparison on the 8th grade ELA test. Our students in 2019 were at 86%, of them were proficient, meaning they scored a level 3 or 4, and the STAR Renaissance from that year predicted they would, 89% of them would score a level 3 or 4. So again, just a little background information to indicate how accurate these assessments are. So how did our students do in June on the STAR assessments in both ELA and math? And how does that compare to how we have done historically on New York State tests? As well as how have our cohorts fared over the year? Okay, so what we're looking at here is ELA predictions for our elementary school, these are students in grades 1 through 5. The blue bar represents the percent of students that were predicted to score a level 3 or 4 that were predicted to score a level three or four on the ELA had it been given. So for example, in grade five, according to the STAR assessment which we gave in June, seventy-seven percent of students were expected to achieve a level three or four on that test had it been given. Last year in 2019, the gray bars represent our score. So you can see that while seventy-seven students, seventy-seven percent of students were predicted to get a level three or four on the ELA this year. Last year, sixty-seven percent of our students um scored a level three or four on the fifth-grade ELA. What we have been looking for here and focusing on is sort of how our kids would have done compared to how we normally do. And then also uh how they would have done compared to the year before. And in those cases, we're really looking at percentage drops of ten percent or greater that uh would cause us, you know, to really think about this and look at it again. I should note that all of the students will be taking STAR assessments in math and ELA again in the early fall. So we will get even uh more recent data on how they are doing. But as you can see here, where our students ended at the end of the year is pretty typical for where we have done on New York State tests in the past. And although we see some small drops, for example, in fourth grade in 2019, eighty-five percent of our students scored proficient. And this year, as fifth graders, seventy-seven were, seventy-seven percent were uh, you know, predicted to score in the proficient range. In ELA, we are not seeing a large regression in academic achievement. What we're looking at right now is similar slide for middle school. Again, the blue bars indicate where our students were predicted to do at the predicted to perform at the end of this particular school year. The gray bar represents where we have historically performed. And as you can see here, we're pretty well in the pocket. We're not seeing dips of ten percent or more in particular cohorts of kids. Moving on to math. So again, same type of data. We're looking at the blue bars represent students and where they were predicted to s- how percentages of them that were predicted to score proficiently on a state test in math compared to where we have historically been. So here we do see some concerns in grades four and in grade five. Uh, this year, we had seventy-five percent of fourth-grade students predicted to achieve proficiency on the New York State test, sixty-nine percent in fifth grade. This is off from where we are historically in those grades when the test is actually given. And it also indicates a drop in performance of more than ten percent over um these cohorts of kids. So a couple of things I want to say about that. Um, you know, towards the end of the year in fourth and fifth-grade math, there are a number of concepts that are covered that are actually difficult. Uh, four operations with fractions, solving expressions with parentheses, measurement, including the volume of a prism, um decimals, and some uh advanced geometry concepts. So uh what we are going to do about that is at this point, in sixth grade, we generally begin um accelerating the curriculum uh usually in the middle of quarter one. We're actually going to hold off on that until quarter two uh and make sure that our sixth-grade math teachers do some review for these students of some of those concepts I just mentioned. And equally, we will make sure that our fifth-grade teacher, teachers review some of those concepts with our fourth-grade students. And we will, of course, test them again in the fall and see if we need to add any concepts uh to those lists. Same information here. We are now looking at middle school. And as we could see, our cohorts of students were well into the eighties in terms of what they were projected to achieve. This is pretty consistent with what we have done in the past, and in some cases, even a slight increase uh from what we have done in previous years. So in terms of middle school math at this point, we are not, um, the data does not suggest large gaps in learning for those students. I don't have a slide on this, but I do just want to mention that our kindergarten students take a STAR assessment as well. It is called Kindergarten Numeracy and Early Literacy. It is a national-normed assessment, so it is not a predictor of the New York State test. Um, but again, ninety-seven percent of our kindergartners were deemed proficient in June based on this assessment. So again, as far as our youngest and arguably most vulnerable learners during distance learning, uh, they have done quite well according to this assessment. Moving on to advanced placement scores, uh, this is, you know, our five-year look at the number exams we have given versus the percentage of students who have achieved, uh, percentage of AP students scoring a level three or better on the exam. Um, it, it is worth mentioning that the exams, the AP exams were revised considerably this year. Uh, they were given at home. A content was amended, amended to include content taught primary uh prior to March as a, as a means to maintain equity for the many students all over the country who were participating in distance learning, as well as participating in advanced placement courses. But as you can see, ninety-two percent of our AP students uh scored at level three or better. Uh, we gave a increase in exam that's, that has been an ongoing trend. We gave seven hundred sixty-five exams this year as opposed to seven eleven in two thousand and nineteen.
Hey Mara, I just so understand that last grab.
Yeah.
If, if a student took two tests and got a two-on-one and a three on the other, would they be in the ninety-two percent? Because they've got a three on one of the two tests they took?
Yes, I believe that is accurate. So if you're considered an AP student and you took two exams and got a three on one and a two on the other, you would be included in that ninety-two percent.
Okay.
Do, do you know what the percentage would be if you um just said of all those tests taken, how many, what percentage of those tests were three or higher?
I do know it by, I do have the information by exam. I'm, I'm not presenting that tonight, but I do. We are given that information.
That seems like maybe as relevant and perhaps more relevant than, than, because Mike points out, you know, a situation where you could have what somebody counted as theoretically doing very, you know, very well, but yet mixed results, right?
True, but this is also an apples-to-apples comparison. So when we're saying ninety-two uh percent of students scored three or better compared to eighty-two percent the previous year, that's the same comparison.
Just as someone who went through all the tests individually and individually, the percent who scored three or better this year, our students did better on basically every exam. But again, it was a very different testing format.
Do we have the data on the percentage of our graduates who take at least one AP before they graduate?
It's pretty high.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. Uh, I can't, I don't know it, but I'm sure we could find that out.
Yeah, just curiosity.
Sure. Um, I did, you know, make some comparisons in the percentage of students scoring three or above to your point in some of our exams where very, a good number of students participate and compared the two thousand nineteen data to the two thousand and twenty data. So again, these are percentage of students in any of these individual AP courses scoring at a level three or above. The yellow line is the two thousand and nineteen percentage and the blue line is the twenty-twenty percentage. So as you can see here, uh, we did quite well and in many cases made gains uh from what our students did in two thousand and nineteen. But again, as Anne Stute we pointed out, these were very different exams.
It's a hundred percent in B C looks like calculus.
That's right. So that might give you a little more of the information um you, you were looking for there um, Mike and John, in terms of individual exams. Lastly, we'll end with the college matriculation for the class of two thousand and twenty. Um, sixty-two, if you round up, percent of the students uh are attending the most competitive colleges and universities, followed by eighteen point three percent and highly competitive. Um, again, this is very in line with what our students did the year prior. It was uh most competitive was sixty-one percent. Highly competitive, twenty-one percent. Um, but again, you know, the college uh application process and matching process, the guidance department in line with the challenge success work is focusing on fit um and getting kids in the colleges where they feel they will be uh able to be happy and be comfortable and excel. Um, we did add a category this year called specialized, which is three point two percent. And that includes schools such as RISD, Rhode Island School of Design, the Savannah College for Art and Design, and SUNY Purchase, which indicates that are, we have many students, well, some students looking for different uh art-based experiences and getting into certainly some of the most prestigious uh art schools that our country has to offer. So that is um a fun fact and interesting and, you know, great for all of these kids. We wish them well. And we wish them a wonderful first-year school in whatever form that might take.
So Mara, when you step all the way back and having been hadn't such an unusual spring, what do you think about?
Um, you know, in all honesty, at first I was concerned that we would see large dips in achievement. Um, and that would have obviously been a major concern of mine and something that would need immediate attention. When we did not see that, uh, at least in this data that is presented, and again, this is primarily through one exam. But, you know, when we're, when that is not coming up in the data except for a few cases of maybe fourth and fifth-grade math. Um, we, I've sort of been pushing myself to think, is that because we got almost all the way through March? And if this year is a little even more inconsistent with perhaps in and out, how could that data be uh affected in a different way? Um, but all in all, I mean, I have to say, looking at the data and knowing how hard our teachers worked and how willing our students were to pull up their bootstraps and, and do their best. Um, I think we have some data that is reassuring. I am wanting to watch it very closely as we go through this school year, knowing that the school year will be very unpredictable. But also thinking if you can build a case for um you know, if you're not seeing large uh regressions in learning, how might you, once this is all over, really use um a hybrid format to open up what you can offer to students, knowing that hopefully your academic achievement can be maintained, especially for kids who are older, um utilizing those environments?
Thank you, thank you for that, Mara. I think that was very, very well said. Is, as you go through fall twenty twenty, wh- what, what is your first opportunity to be able to do the assessments to see how we're doing in our new environment?
So we are actually going to try to have the three-through-eight, K-through-eight students take the STAR assessments in reading and math prior to September thirtieth and in school. Um, so we are hoping to re, you know, uh, give those exams. Yeah. I didn't hear that.
And were those assessments given, those assessments given last year? I think I have an elementary student. I feel like it was January or February as opposed to post-COVID.
Those assess, out of those assessment numbers we looked at tonight were given in June. That assessment is generally given about three times a year. So we do it once in September, once in February, March, and once in, at, towards the end of the year. Sometimes twice, but usually three times. But this time, I promise, we gave it in June.
Yeah, and John, you do, you are garbled every once in a while. So if we react funny, just know that, that we're waiting for your voice to catch up with you.
Yeah. One other thing I do want to mention, because we did look uh pretty deeply into it. The fifth grade, which had that kind of dip in, in math. Um, we actually only had an eighty-seven percent participation rate, which seems high, but in most other grades, it was closer to ninety-seven uh percent participation rate. So um we're going to be looking very carefully when we give these assessments to the sixth graders in the fall, which are the same students to see if those dips, particularly in math, are still there. Um, because it was a low participation rate for that particular cohort of students as compared to others.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, uh, Mara? You're good?
No, if you want briefer meetings, you should do a resolution that I can't present.
Thanks for that uh tip. We may have to look further. Okay, the, uh, the last thing on my report is really um part B, which is the approval of our professional learning plan, which is an annual approval. We're required by the state to have a, a plan in place. This comes out of the work of the Professional Learning Committee that we have, which is teachers, board member, administrators, et cetera, putting that together. And I think there was a copy uh attached to your board agenda. Uh, so we asked that you um uh present a resolution for that.
And Roy, just if I could, for the benefit of the public, I, I was, I was very impressed that the plan had been mod- modified to include this, the notion of the multiple instructional environments. It really was very focused on remote learning. And also um the appropriate inclusion of race and social justice issues, which of course have been triggered in the last couple of months. So I mean, really, it was up to date and very current, given some of the significant issues that you and your staff are facing.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. And uh at a future board meeting, I'm going to ask Mara and Bill Meyer actually to present um some further information on the race and equity uh uh i- issues and how we're, how we're helping or hoping to address them a bit better this year at the upper-grade levels. Uh, Bill's been working for us this summer with Sarah Lawrence College, and we've created a partnership with Yonkers and Mount Vernon that we're excited about, and you'll hear more about that at our, hopefully, the next board meeting.
Great.
Great.
Other board meeting, board members, comments on the professional learning plan? Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, a- as you know, I still have a lot of friends who are superintendents. And uh many of them are doing extraordinary jobs. Actually, they're all doing extraordinary jobs under crazy circumstances. But air, from everything I can see, Bronxville is out in front, and I'm very proud of that. Um, I think we have a great deal to be thankful for.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. So Connie, can we take both of these resolutions together? Which is the approval of the plan and to authorize the president or the superintendent to execute the certificates? Okay, so motion to take both, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Rachel, Dr. Kelly.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I have before you a number of uh personnel uh resolutions that I'd like you to consider. Um, in the first uh portion, we have certified staff. We do have a teacher resignation. And uh thanks to Anne My And thanks to Ann Meyer's efficiency and effectiveness, we have found a replacement that we all feel very confident in. In addition, this is the time of year that we put the teacher mentors before you. We did have a few revisions. We're very proud of our mentoring program, and we do offer that not only for our new probationary staff, but also for any faculty that are switching assignments to make sure that they have the support that they need to do well. Unfortunately, you guys had approved a a leave replacement for us for high school Spanish who backed out. So we are rescinding her appointment this evening. In addition, we have a couple of teacher aid resignations, as well as new teacher aides, as well as our lunch monitor rates I need you to to approve. We also have a number of teacher residents. As you know, that's the program that we offer in our elementary school for graduate students who work with us every day at a set rate per day. And it's really a win-win because they gain experience and they're wonderful utility players for us. And specifically this coming year, you'll notice we are asking you to approve more than usual because Tricia and Rikia have come up with a wonderful system to help them in our classes that we've split into two different spaces. So they really will take on that added role this coming year. It's also the agenda where I'm asking you to approve all substitutes, teachers, teacher aides, nurses, clerical, and maintenance facility. I do want to just take one more moment and comment on negotiations that the district completed with our facilities unit. It was respectful and productive, and I want to thank both the board and the unit for being able to come up with a fair and positive process. In addition, you have Dr. Levitt, our medical director's annual contract. She has been extraordinary over these past several months, helping us make sense of the Department of Health guidelines, and we are grateful for her work with us. And then we have one new appointment on the athletics stipend list, which resulted in a revised fall coaching roster for you. So I have before you items A through W, please.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve personal items A through W?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Rachel, I think you have one more item.
I do, thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution from the floor based on discussion in executive session regarding student number two zero three nine zero six. And that is for you to authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a stipulation of settlement and general release between the Board of Education and parents regarding this student for the next three years. And this, of course, was in consultation with District Council.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Carlin, do you want to start with our financial report?
Sure. We are in the process of undergoing a remote audit at the moment for the 2019, 2020 school year. So I have a preliminary document for the month of June that shows us with about almost a $900,000 surplus. You know, this close is the first time for the new treasurer, so I'm interested to see how this audit goes. Our revenues are up significantly as Bosie's aid and county sales tax was higher than anticipated. I think we'll keep the maximum allowable in unassigned fund balance as we may need some for COVID later in the current year. And we'll probably end up transferring about three to four hundred thousand into the new reserve for teachers retirement system. And then possibly a little bit into our capital projects reserve. Those transfers were approved at the June meeting. So, you know, we'll have the preliminary audit document probably sometime in September. So I'm looking for that. We have no current financial report for the year we're in now, 2020, 21. But as I've discussed with the the board already, that we're seeing significant pressures in revenues. You know, specifically state aid. There's no way to know yet how much, but we're preparing for anywhere between fifty to five hundred thousand dollars in cuts. Interest income and possibly county sales tax are also probably going to be under projections. On the expenditure side, special education expenditures and COVID-19 related expenditures, as well as insurance, are giving us problems so far. And I'm also anticipating substitute costs will probably go over budget during the year as well. It's gonna be a tough year and a different year than we've seen financially in recent years. You know, we're probably looking at the possibility of a spending freeze as early as the fall or possibly taking advantage of new regulations allowing us to use reserves to increase this current year budget. But, you know, we're keeping a close eye on it. We've had COVID-related expenditures out of the general fund so far of almost $300,000, and the foundation is is funding about $150,000 more, dollars more tonight. So, you know, we're, we're spending a lot of money to keep the facility as safe as possible and ready to to continue having kids in the building all year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I look at the June report, Dan, and we had almost over four hundred fifty thousand dollars of unexpected state aid last year. I guess I don't understand that.
Are Bosie's aid is trending up? And we're actually getting more than has been in the state aid runs. That's, it's primarily Bosie's aid because we're spending more and more with Bosie's as far as technology goes.
And we get, we get like a rebate. I don't know if that's the right word, but we get a rebate off the money we spend.
Yeah, we get about thirty percent back.
Yeah, okay. And then of the money you spent so far, the roughly, you know, almost three hundred thousand, is, was that all, what what fiscal year would that be in? Is that?
I was, I was able to encumber about $200,000 in the 2019, 2020 school year where we ordered a lot of the the personal separators, the clear, I don't want to call it plexiglass because it's not, but it's similar to plexiglass. We were able to order a significant amount of those and other P P E before June 30th.
So of that three hundred thousand, yeah, just rough terms, two hundred thousand was the last fiscal year and a hundred thousand.
Exactly.
Other questions for Dan? Okay, Dan, why don't you charge on?
Sure, we have some financial action items. We have a contract for training services with New York Orthopedics for forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the 2020, 21 school year. You know, we, it's really the contract for our trainer specifically. And we anticipate, you know, even if we do shut down, but we just heard today that sports are are at least in in some way gonna be able to start very soon. We anticipate being able to use the trainer, even if sports are postponed or canceled. She's trained in contact tracing. She's also works very closely with injured athletes. And and even if we are shut down, treatment will continue. And, you know, this particular trainer, we view as almost being a member of our staff. And if we didn't continue paying during the possibility to shut down, there's a good chance we would lose this particular trainer. It's very cost-efficient contract because to provide the same service with hiring an employee by ourselves would be significantly higher. So I would recommend that the board approve this contract as presented.
Okay, do you want to do three or do you want to do them all as one?
Well, I'll go through them all quickly and then we can if the board is interested in approving them all at the same time, that's fine.
Yeah, Connie set it up that way, so let's go ahead and just go down that.
B, we discussed already the grants from the foundation for the Pure Zone application and the Zoom classroom and home kits for teachers, total of approximately a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And C, this is pains me a little bit, but I don't think we have any other recourse. Renewing our transportation contracts for athletic and field trip services because basically, we don't really have a choice. There's no one out there, other, there's no other companies out there bidding on this type of contract. We're gonna look, work closely with them to try and make sure we don't run into some of the problems we ran into last fall. And that's, you know, we're gonna do the best we can with them. Unfortunately, we don't really have a choice. So we're asking to renew the transportation contract for athletic and field trips.
You're saying there's one contract that provides a service for the transportation, and we have to go with the person that causes so many headaches last, last year.
And give him a raise.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay.
Doesn't the COVID situation present unique challenges for the busing community, Dan? In terms of finding drivers, a lot of the drivers are older and sometimes more susceptible to the virus. So presenting a real challenge to the companies, and in this case, the company
Yeah.
To find and secure and retain drivers.
I think that's, that's one issue, Tom. And also, we've seen a few companies go out of business last year when they stopped getting paid when, when New York shut down. And that void really hasn't been filled yet, so.
Isn't it, it's important, though, to say, even whether we renew this or not, we can expect, and even regardless of the track record from last fall, we can expect some trouble in transportation-related trouble. This, right?
I would say that's a reasonable expectation.
I think it's important to voice that in the public forum and to note that, you know, we know it's gonna happen and there's not really a lot we can do about it.
Point.
And if anyone gets really angry about it, to call Roy.
Righto.
Okay, so any other conversations about A through C? Okay, hearing none, I have a motion to approve A through C, resolution A through C.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I also would like to join Roy in thanking the foundation for their funding of these unanticipated needs during the COVID pandemic. I mean, it really is a fabulous, fabulous gesture on their part. Back to you, Dan.
Last thing I have is a fire safety plan, which is an annual requirement by S E D that the board approve annually. It's generated by Mike Lee in consultation with the Eastchester Fire Department and our architects and takes into account ongoing construction. So I'd ask the board to approve our fire safety plan.
Yeah. And Dan, that was my only question. It was hard to see, had it been modified for construction or COVID or our hybrid learning.
Yeah, we're losing a north exit. The stairwell is gonna be offline and and we're putting temporary doors to block off that, so we have no dead-end corridors. That's a big thing with fire inspectors. So we have to reroute those kids up on the third and fourth floor who would normally take that stairwell until it's back online. And all that's accounted for. Exits, we have no problem. We have, we have, we have enough doors in this building to get people out real quick. And actually, in the coming year, we're gonna open up some more entrances to get them in just as quick socially distanced as opposed to, as opposed to the three entrances we usually have open for coming in the building. We're gonna open up a bunch more during arrival.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Dan, do you also have your notice of your annual fire safety inspection?
Yeah, that's the same thing. It's a related item.
Okay. And you don't need to take, you don't need to say anything about that?
No, it's said basically all there is to say about fire.
Okay. Rachel, moving back to you on the C P S C C S C, student placement recommendations?
I mean, did you just want, did you want to do a facilities quick update? Prior to that, because I see it was under Dan's other part of his report, I'll just jump in if you want to do that first.
No, you go ahead and do that first, please.
Okay, sure. So just kind of give a status report of where we are now that we're getting extremely close to the start of school. We, we have been a bit concerned that things will be getting done in time, which is usually the case towards the end of the summer and the beginning of the school year. A lot happens in the final two weeks leading up to school opening. But if you walk down some certain hallways right now, you'd wonder how it's gonna be possible, and we were running the same thing. So Dan and I have been conducting walkthroughs with the various contractors, have received assurances that they will get the work done. We did have to authorize some additional overtime for the general contractor to do some work this Saturday and next Saturday to, to be able to complete the work in order for us to get our rooms back and to open in time. We did run into a bit of an issue with the curtain wall in terms of the windows, the permanent windows and the cast stone around them will not get here in time. So we had to quickly scramble around to work with the contractor and our construction manager to get temporary windows onsite and installed, which will give us the opportunity to get the C O's in time to use those eleven classrooms. So it's gonna be a scramble to the end. But I'm fairly confident that things will get done when they said they were gonna get done. I just thought I'd share my screen with you to give you an idea of some of the good places that you'll see that are in pretty good shape. So what you're looking at now is the Innovation Center. The picture, I think it's to the left, the one with the windows, is looking from the one entrance down. And you can see they're, put the ceiling grid up and the lights are in, so the ceiling will be get done shortly. The floor is already done. What you see on the floor is just protective stuff. And then from the opposite way, looking back, you can see some of the cabinetry is already installed in our in our Innovation Center, and there's a event fan there as well. So that room is in very good shape, and we're looking forward to having that online. Here's a picture of the cafeteria, which I thought was pretty nice. So you can see the picture again on the left that has the door, the windows and the doors that goes out to that little walkway. But you can see the large skylight and the vaulted ceilings that we have. The room has been painted and you can see the pattern on the floor as well. The floor has, is, should be finalized actually today. The, the other picture is from the new side, if you will, looking back towards the old cafeteria to give you a sense of how large a space we're getting. to give you a sense of how large a space we're getting and how it filled in nicely for us, I think. So that's it's a pretty impressive space. And the picture on top, I've joked and said it's not really MetLife Stadium where you're waiting for the urinals put in. That's actually the back wall where the new server equipment is going to be. So there's entrance doors there on both sides where children will come in to get to get served. And then a couple of pictures on the left, you can see the nurses' suite. It's quite impressive space, and that's also in its final stages. The it's all been painted, the floor is down, waiting for doors to be put in. And the place cleaned up a bit, but it'll have, I believe it's six examination rooms, an isolation area, reception area, and a nurses' station and an office for the for our medical director as well. And that turned out to be a really terrific space. And then finally, the curtain wall. It's hard to see, but you can see all the brickwork that has been done thus far and that moved along quite nicely. And you can see some of the temporary windows that are being placed in, that plywood will eventually come out where the temp windows and the temp regress will be in. So I thought you'd appreciate at least some of the areas that are certainly come to the final stages. And some of the facilities, people, members who may have been on the walkthrough, you can see there's been some progress since the last time you guys weren't even just a short time ago. But again, you know, it's 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 a it's a race to the finish line here. We're hoping that things go as well as they can, so we'll be in places to in place to use our rooms and operate school accordingly, so.
Thank you, Roy. And I know you'll keep us posted as we go through the final part of this race.
Certainly do that.
Back to you, Rachel.
Okay, thank you. This is the board meeting, really, that every public school in the nation goes before their Board of Education to have all of their special education recommendations approved so that we can start the year and ensure that all of our students with disabilities are receiving the services that have been recommended for them. And as you know, there are a tremendous amount of mandates that surround special education, both federal and state regulations. And Bronxville takes that very seriously and adheres to them. And that's through the comprehensive evaluation process, the considerations made at committee, and then, of course, implementing those services. So you have before you every student with an ID number and the recommendations for services that the committee has made for them. As you know, we offer a range of services, everything from our special classes to resource room, to related services that include counseling, speech language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy. So I am happy to take any questions that you may have, and I am looking for your approval so we can hit the ground running with these services for our children.
Hearing no questions, may I have a motion?
Just wait. So first of all, in the write-up, it mentions a history. And I didn't see that in the document documents. It's, I was looking for it, Rachel.
Yes, it was on the third page. The first two pages are charts of current numbers. And then the third page was a running history from two thousand four.
Yeah, I just have the charts and these, what I can pull up, all I got is the two charts. I didn't have page three and four. I don't know if other members had that or not.
Send it to you, Mike, and to anyone else that didn't get that.
Yeah. So and and I've commented this before, and there's been an article written in the Wall Street Journal about this. The number of 504 students at our at our high school. Do we, since I didn't see the history, are we seeing any improvement in that?
It was actually very stable, but still high. So that, you know, as you know, we have a requirement for 504 accommodations. And that's based on the Federal Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy four where we first started hearing about equal access, physical access to buildings. And we started seeing the Rams, and that has played out in schools in terms of equal access. And it is not unusual for school districts that are rich in resources to have high numbers of 504s. We are in good company along, you know, in Westchester County. The same evaluation process is in place where we look at a student's cognitive ability, their academic achievement. And what we see mostly with our 504 numbers are medical diagnoses of ADD, ADHD and or anxiety. And it's when those diagnoses negatively impact on on your ability to learn. And that's really the criteria that that we use. So it's not enough to have the diagnosis, but then there also has to be impact.
I just find it very unusual that we have a middle school number that is one third of what we have in a high school.
And we're looking forward to that bubble moving.
Logic logically, that doesn't make sense to me. I'm sure statistically it doesn't make sense either, but I don't have the data to prove that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All opposed? Okay. Roy, policy updates?
Yeah, so we're asking for the board to approve revised policies that are related to data security and student records. I want to thank Brad. I think he's still on. Brad worked on these policies to make sure they're in line with EdLog to to whatever it is. One of those. But there are just revisions that we're we need to, that we're required to have in place in our on these policies.
And they don't require two readings, just one?
One, yes.
Okay. Okay, double checking on that. I'm sorry, Connie, what did you, did you say something?
In special circumstances, we can do it in one reading if that's what the board decides. Okay. Usually we have to read.
It says it right on the agenda, Connie. That's where we're going by.
Okay, any questions? Okay. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, moving right along. Any committee reports for the group? I think, John, you may have had a facilities meeting.
Yes, we've had a few and a walkthrough, which you were a part of as well. And I really don't have anything to add about what Roy said. I will say that he has been great about keeping the facilities committee up to date on what's going on with frequent, often multiple times a day updates. And we do appreciate that, and we'll be pulling for everything to get done in time.
And thank you for your leadership. I know it's been a lot, and there's a lot going on, and appreciate what you and the rest of the facilities committee has done to support Roy through this time.
Thank you.
And run the race strongly. Finance or anybody else? Okay. Next board meeting will be on the seventeenth. We'll have so much to talk about. We'll have a lot of experience under our belts by then. And so with that, Roy, should we go to the public part of our meeting?
Sure. Connie, are you doing that part? See any questions in the chat room?
I see only one, one comment or question from an unidentified member of the public. Shall I read it?
I don't know. Do you want to take any unidentified member comments or questions? It's up to you.
Obviously, this is unusual to have somebody come forward as unidentified.
Well, it comes forward as iPad twenty one, and I did request that individual to identify themselves, and they have not responded, so.
Well, Roy, could we could we respond to them offline and then bring it up at the next meeting if appropriate?
Whatever you'd like to do, I'd be happy to. Connie, if you want to send me the question, I'd be happy to to do that.
Sure.
From Brad, is this, did you just put that in there, Brad?
Yeah, that's the comment, so that you have it.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's related to ventilation, so you know, in the classrooms. So I can I can respond to that question offline if I know who the person is, but since I don't, I can't respond to.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
So just so you know, it's related to ventilation and air conditioners fans shouldn't be used together because it spreads the virus. So we'll be addressing that. We're not using fans and the window units. We're opening the windows with the window units. The the new ventilation system, we have the MRF filters. They won't have, you know, there's a separate ventilation system. So we believe that is going to be fine.
And Roy, also part of the renovation that we've been doing, the construction's put a lot more HVAC in as well, which is going to help overall.
It will help overall. I'd like to say that all the areas that they said were going to be operable for septic and mayth will be, but I'm not hopeful for that. But all the AC, but we we do know that the we will put a window air conditioner unit in every room that does not have at least a new vent, a new air conditioning system in it. And we will also believe we'll have enough air purifiers in each of those rooms as well to help with the other issue.
Okay. Great. And that's it for us, Connie?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, should we have a motion to adjourn? Second? I heard it from Jen. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, guys. I know it was a long meeting. Thanks for staying in there and see you the first day of school.
Thank you.
Everybody.